Good afternoon and welcome to the regular board meeting of Savannah-Chattanooga Board of Public Education. This is Wednesday, January 5th, 2022. This is our regular board meeting, and it is indeed our first meeting of the new year. And I would say Happy New Year to each of you. I hope your winter break and winter vacation was good. We welcome you here. We do have visitors with us today that are here present as they were in December. And I take a special pleasure in welcoming all of you because it's nice to have parents and interested citizens back in the room with us. As we begin today, I would ask Ms. Davis-Freeland if indeed this meeting has been posted in accordance with all of the state laws. And she assures me that it has, so we've done what we need to do to publicly advertise this meeting. For those of you who are with us today, we also streamed this meeting. We have people in person with us, but it will also be being streamed at the same time on our website. And so we welcome you in whatever format or whatever media, social media that you're using to watch us today. As we begin, I would ask that you stand with me. Well, you want to... Ms. Whitehead is going to introduce someone to sing and the National Anthem, and then we'll also stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This afternoon for our opening exercises, we have singing the National Anthem, Mr. Russell Watkins from Savannah Arts Academy. He is the choral director there. Mr. Watkins has been teaching for 14 years, nine of those years being at Savannah Arts. I ask that after the National Anthem, you please remain standing for the pledge to our flag.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn turning light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright lights and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
As we begin today, I'd like to have our safety briefing presented on our screens, please.
For safety and security purpose, it is essential that I provide you with a public safety briefing in the event that we experience an on-scene crisis or emergency. First and foremost, you need to know where the exit doors are located. When directed, the public should exit through the doors to the left or the right behind you expeditiously. The exit for the cabinet member and board will be behind me through the small doors to the right that leads to the hallway where the bathrooms are located. You should exit either the left or the right based on instructions given by campus police. All should go to the assemble area that will be designated by campus police at that time. If 911 needs to be called, the responsibility will lie with campus police or designate me. Also, if we are in need of an AED prior to arrival of EMS, that will be located on the left side wall adjacent to the exit door. It will be responsibility of campus police to utilize that or designate me. Upon the arrival of EMS, it will be the responsibility of campus police or security personnel that are outside at the time to spot and direct them. If we experience a small fire, you should find the fire extinguisher behind me through the small doors where the restrooms are located to the left adjacent to the exit doors. Thank you and have a great day.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda from Dr. Howard Howell, please?
Thank you, Dr. Buck. I move that the agenda be approved with revisions to items 4.01, 5.03, and 8.15, and add item 9.01, that's budget process update.
You've heard that motion is their second, second by Dr. Breenman. Any questions or concerns from board members? All in favor of approving the agenda as it has been amended, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion passes eight, zero, zero. Let the record show that Mr. Cashmore is absent and will be in later. He ended up being called to a meeting, unfortunately. We need to move to amend the approved budget also.
Thank you. I move that the approved agenda be amended to add item 7.06, proposed district boundaries of Chatham County Board of Education.
Heard that motion is their second, second by Mrs. Johnson. Any discussion from board members? All in favor of the addition to the agenda, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion passes eight, zero, zero. Moving on to announcements, there will be an audit committee meeting on January 20th at 8:00 a.m. in this room in this building. I'm also announcing that a letter of intent to open a charter school has been received from the Excel Center, Charter, Excel Center, Savannah Charter High School, and will be made part of the official record. This is for a new charter school that serves only young people who have not graduated from high school so far. And this is, we must announce that into our record, which I have just done. I don't think there are any other announcements. Moving on, it is customary that we recognize those employees and students who have passed away during the last month since our last meeting. It is always sad to make this announcement, but even sadder when it happens to be a student. Today, I announce that Marion Tashan Robinson, a ninth grade student at Groves High School, died on December 6th, 2021. I would ask that you stand with me as we find out this young man. Now my pleasure to introduce our superintendent, Dr. Hannah Lovett. Dr. Lovett.
Thank you, Officer, thank you, President Buck. Officer, the members of the board, it's my pleasure to wish everyone a Happy New Year. We are looking forward to a much smoother 2022. And I'll begin my report by introducing you to the December Student of the Month. Our featured student of the month for December is a sophomore at the School of Liberal Studies at Savannah High. His nominator describes our scholar as having an inquisitive nature that looks beyond the standards being presented in the classroom in order to fully understand the content being taught. He is described as an ambitious and respectful young man that will represent the School of Liberal Studies and SCCPSS with honor and distinction. He maintains a current grade point average of 90.1, demonstrates a very positive attitude, and rarely misses school. Our honored student also serves on the Chatham County Youth Commission, where he uses his position to advocate for his peers at the School of Liberal Studies at Savannah High and throughout our community. In addition, our student has a part-time job at Zaxby's, where he is known for his ready smile and his willingness to work hard. And we have probably met him on more than one occasion. We are very proud that our student of the month will be taking home several gifts from our community partners, the Savannah Schools Federal Credit Union and Members First Federal Credit Union. Additionally, he will receive a one-topping small pizza certificate donated by our partner, Donato's Pizza. He will receive a sweet treat from, I think it's Savannah Candy Kitchen, which we will all talk with him about. And his class will receive his choice and receive copies of his favorite book, which will be provided by our partner, East Shaver Booksellers. And finally, he will take home a portrait by Upscale Photography, which is provided by Savannah-Chattanooga County Public Schools. I am proud to announce that the superintendent's student of the month for December is Aiden Wigfall. We wish to congratulate her.
I did a little packet of sauce.
Thank you so much. I'd like to again offer congratulations to Aiden, his family, and the faculty and staff of the School of Liberal Studies at Savannah High. He is joined today with his, with his parents, his nominator, Mr. Lee, and Dr. Jenkins, who is the principal of the School of Liberal Studies at Savannah High School. We'd like to thank Aiden for his great representation of our scholars at Savannah-Chattanooga County Public Schools. We wish him the best in his future endeavors. We look forward to seeing him again here at the Horseshoe, and we also thank his family and his school family for being here with us today. Thank you so much for coming. We have a number of good news items. Number one, I'd like to just thank all of the staff and families for their support. We are happy to open up second semester yesterday and actually had really good figures in terms of attendance. About 85, 86% of our staff was present and ready to work on the very first day, and student attendance was just as good. So we'll be doing what we always do, which is publishing our information regarding to COVID cases, recognizing that certainly those who are at home recovering did not contract during the school period, but certainly their, their affaces are reported by us, and we're providing as much support as we can. So to begin, SCCPSS has joined WTOC to support a new Books for Kids initiative. The program is designed to put books in the hands of children who need them most, especially those who do not have books at home. Children who own books are shown to excel in reading and communication skills, translating to a greater academic success. We thank WTOC and sponsor Ken Nugent for stepping in to help our youngest readers. Our good friend and long-term partner, International Paper recently donated literacy kits to the students at Garden City Elementary. In addition, they conducted a cult drive among their employees for Operation Warm Coat for their partner school, Garden City. We thank International Paper for their continued support of our schools. Both White Bluff Elementary School and Windsor Forest Elementary School were selected as Shoes from the Heart, an event partner, the first schools in Georgia to do so. Shoes from the Heart is a Missouri-based organization that believes in making a difference in the lives of those who've been affected by unforeseen circumstances. Fifty students from each school received a new pair of tennis shoes. Dual enrollment in Georgia is a phenomenal opportunity for high school students to take college-level courses, recognizing that recent changes for dual enrollment, state funding, have limited the number of courses that students can take. Georgia Southern and Savannah-Chattanooga County Public Schools have developed a specials scholarship opportunity to facilitate dual enrollment opportunities beyond the state-funded 30 credit hours for the select students from Savannah-Chattanooga County Public Schools. We'd like to take a moment and thank Georgia Southern for their partnership and their continued support of our efforts to support those students who wish to go above and beyond in dual enrollment. We'd like to offer a big Savannah-Chattanooga County Public Schools shout-out to our Seela and high school science teacher, J. Lee Ennis. She is a longtime educator in our district. She was honored with the LaBster STEM Excellence in Teaching Award. Ms. Ennis is only one of 10 award recipients nationwide. Recipients were recognized for their passion for teaching, advancement of experiential learning, creativity in curriculum design, innovation in instruction, and commitment to student success. Additionally, Ms. Ennis participated in the high school panel discussion about reversing learning loss at the LaBster Connected Conference in November. Ms. Ennis, who I'm thinking is listening, thank you so much for all you do for our Seela students, and a much deserved, huge congratulations to you. Our students and staff at Coastal Middle School were busy during the holiday season in a student council-led initiative. The school collected 973 pounds of food during a recent food drive. The food collected will provide 811 meals to those in need in our community. Students and staff also collected donations for happy bags for the homeless. Special thanks to the entire team at Coastal Middle School for your outreach efforts and for your continued connection to our community. Our very own Sherri Dennis, Georgia Teacher of the Year, who is with us today, delivered the commencement address at the Georgia Southern University Fall Commitment Exercises. Her message to her fellow Eagles was simple and heartfelt. Go out into the world with your eyes and your hearts wide open. Go out into the world and make something beautiful. It starts with something so very simple, something so very possible that is within your reach, just being kind. We appreciate always the representation of Mrs. Dennis and the work that she does and her continued representation of our school and all the educators in the state of Georgia. Thank you, Mrs. Dennis.
Now I'm going to take over the podium for a moment, Madam Superintendent. We are honored and fortunate to have a dynamic and innovative superintendent who leads through effective communication practices and demonstrates a commitment to every child and every staff member across our district. It's with this in mind that Dr. Lovett has recently been recognized by the National School Public Relations Association through a program that recognizes just 25 school district leaders across the nation each year. INSRA seeks to identify superintendents who demonstrate dynamic, fast-paced leadership with strong communication at its core. We are excited to announce that Dr. Hannah Lovett is a 2021 Superintendent-to-Watch, award recipient, and has been recognized by the National School Public Relations Association. Thank you, Dr. Lovett.
I appreciate all of the support, and we couldn't do it without a great team. That's from board members to staff, we do it all together. Thank you so much. One final announcement, we've received lots of questions about our annual event, our 2022 Student Success Expo and STEM Festival. If you have been around at all, you know that it is the largest family engagement activity that we have every year. And based on current public health conditions, we will not be able to have that event in person this year to our chagrin. However, with always having safety first, we will be announcing shortly the way that we will engage our parents during this time period. And so I want to thank the staff for the work that they've done. We have been able to pivot throughout the pandemic. Last year, we had a virtual STEM festival. We did very, very well with that, and so we will communicate through our schools over the next few days how that STEM festival will take place this year, but it will not be an in-person event. But we do hope that conditions will allow us to engage in some other ways over the next few months. You know, every year, we also have our Books Blankets and Family Fun event, which is outside, and we hope that we will be able to do that this year. But thank you to the staff and to the families for their understanding of our need to put safety first. Thank you again for your support, and we look forward to a great second semester. Thank you very much. We do have an operational update that should be pretty brief. I think you have seen this already, just for the record, and I think my op-ed in the Savannah Morning News and all of my correspondence to families and staff indicates that the goal remains that we will maintain a safe, healthy learning environment so that all schools will remain open five days a week. I think we've done pretty well for our semester. We learned a lot of lessons, and that continues to be our goal, and we expect to do that not only for second semester, but for beyond this time. As you see on the screen here, those tested layered mitigation strategies, we continue to require face masks, we continue to use PPE. Our cleanliness and sanitation practices are still in place. Our social distancing, where possible, we have implemented event capacity limits and controls. There is weekly testing for athletes, especially during the winters, simply because we are inside. Vaccinations and booster shots are made available for those who wish to have them. We have limitations for visitors and volunteers, and we are encouraging people not to think about being, having perfect attendance. Under ordinary circumstances, we like perfect attendance, but under these circumstances, we are asking people to stay home when they are not feeling well. You will see on the screen, which of course is available for everyone's review, the guidance from, from the CDC and the World Health Organization. We continue to stay in touch with all of our medical professionals and seek their guidance, especially when conditions are changing as they are right now. On our website and also available to those who need it is a flow chart, which helps one understand, parents particularly, what happens if your child has symptoms of COVID-19, was exposed and is not vaccinated, and was exposed and is vaccinated. We also have a nurse. We are very fortunate to have nurses in our buildings and also lead nurses who are able to help parents work through those scenarios. So this is prominently on our website, and we ask that you refer to it if you have any questions. We will remind you, as I did in my communication across the holiday in last year, we remind you that we will definitely look at quarantining and all of those procedures. We certainly try to keep buildings open if we can. We, we recognize that with the rate of infections that we may have staff for out, so we have emergency plans available, but there may possibly be rolling closures. So as indicated in my communication to parents, I ask all parents to have an emergency plan available. We often are not able to give you a whole lot of notice if we need to close down a classroom or wing, so we ask you to have a plan available if you need to. I am very proud that we are able to say that as of December 17th, 2021, of our 5,600 employees, 4,738 of them confirmed, were confirmed as being vaccinated. 300 plus are in the process of review for confirmation. That means that about 85, 84.7 or so have been confirmed for being vaccinated. That's important because what we want to do is ensure that our staff is vaccinated, they are able to be there to provide services for our children, but also it's another layer of protection for our children and our staff. We have met regularly with our medical advisory committee, and I want to take a few minutes right now, a few seconds, and thank them publicly. I continue to thank them for their service to us. Even up to yesterday, we were able to convene those professionals to ask for their guidance. With changing conditions, it's important to know what they are seeing in the community and what they think about the procedures that we put in place. They suggested always that we continue to use a layered mitigation approach. They said to us, stay the course, maintain your existing safety practices. Of course, they share our concern about uptick in transmission with the new variant, and they've also pointed out that the severity of the variant is really too early to predict, but they want us all to be cautious. Impact of winter break must be considered before we make any changes. That was our thought along the way. And they thought, they suggested that we consider two weeks after the break at least before we even think about making any substantial changes to practices at this point. And as always, vaccination is critical, and those who can should consider that and encourage boosters as well. I want to make a point that just before the break, we also talked about visitors and volunteers. I want to make a point that just before the break, we also talked about visitors and volunteers. People are so eager to get back to March 12th, I'll say, or March 11th of 2020, and we want to get back there too. But we also want to make sure that we are being as safe as possible. And I do want to point out that we not only listen to families, but we also listen to staff. They're the people. It's a joint process, so it's staff and it's also students and families that we are concerned about. So we're looking at visitors and volunteers across the district, events and athletic capacity. I've gotten several calls, we need more seats, we need more of this, we need more of that. What we are finding is our approach to capacity limits are very much, very common, especially because we have indoor sports. There is weekly testing of athletes available, and we have found that to be very helpful. It has reduced the number of cancellations that we've had to have based on positive tests. And we'll continue to screen upon building entry. Based on the significant rise in COVID transmission since December 1st, we will maintain our existing COVID mitigation strategies. So we're not looking to make any major changes. We are looking to keep reminding people to be safe, to wear their masks, to keep their hands clean, to social distance when possible, and also to make sure that they continue to seek guidance from medical professionals when they're not feeling well. And we ask people to follow the quarantine protocols that have been established. As you see here, I do want to point out, you know, that last year, we talked about will we ever get in the green? And actually, we were in the green last year, and it was so nice. We were all experiencing this joy of seeing the color green. And now we're back in the red again, but I will tell you that we had much success when we were in the red the last time, and we want to stick with that plan. We want to also keep up with the medical advice that we're given, but we want to make sure that we are able to serve our children and keep our staff and children safe while we do that. So we are watching these numbers, and we are disappointed that the numbers are where they are, but we've also been talking with our medical professionals, found that they study like we do the patterns of the surges, and we expect and hope that we will be able to see some drop off, some decrease in those numbers in the coming days. And that is my update.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Levett. Any quick questions for board members?
I just wanted to say thank you to the district, staff, personnel that are staying the course for continuing to give us updates, but also to really, as a healthcare professional, echo the if you feel sick, stay home for both staff and students alike. Not only are we at the height of COVID, but flu season is upon us, the common cold is always there. So anybody that's feeling ill, just stay home until you feel better.
Thank you, Dr. Freeman. Moving on to appearances, we have about several people who have signed up ahead and some who have signed up since we came today. I am taking these in the order in which they were signed up originally. And as we begin our time of public appearances today, I would want to remind those who have signed up to speak that you've been sent a notice about what the state law requires. I'm sure that some of you at least have seen last month's meeting where I said that there is no absolute right to free speech. We certainly respect your right to be here and to speak, but I would tell you that civility and decorum are expected and required if you indeed plan to do your five minutes in front of the public. For those of you who did not sign up until today, you have not had a chance to get that, but you also saw a notice on the front door about what is expected. So we had a few months when we were not particularly good about doing what we knew we needed to do. That is now changed. First person I will call on today and we welcome her is Ms. Lisa Peterson. I believe she will be talking about inappropriate books in the library. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm in, I'm in.
That's all right, and you have five minutes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Do I have to keep this mask on?
If you'll sit behind the screen, you can take out while you're reading.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Peterson, a resident of Chatham County. As you are being made aware today, if you haven't known before, there exist in our middle school and high school libraries many inappropriate books that normalize teenage sex in the context of heterosexuality, homosexuality, transsexuality, and masturbation. Age of consent is never mentioned. These are not books written by leading psychologists and therapists, educators, or parents. This is the reality facing our children as they navigate the minefields of predators and pornographers who infiltrate the once sanctified space known as the school library. I would like to read an excerpt from one of these books, Beyond Magenta by Susan Cullen, which is currently housed at Islands, Jenkins, New Hampstead, Grove, and Windsor. I am reading as the books are written that are in these libraries. I quote, "I was sexually mature." What I mean sexually mature is that I knew about sex. From six up, I used to kiss other guys in my neighborhood, make out with them, and perform oral sex on them. I liked it. I used to love oral and touch their you-know-what. We were really young, but that's what we did. I was making out with girls too. I used to love making out with girls because everyone thought I was so cool. Everybody was encouraging me. Look, Frank's not gay, he's making out with a girl. They wanted to know how the hell I learned to kiss like that. I don't know how I learned, it was pretty weird. Guys used to hit on me, perverts, pedophiles. I'd see guys giving me the look, and it kind of creeped me out. They would touch themselves, saying, "Come here, sweetie." Something told me not to go. I ran away, I ran to where there are a lot of people." This is another quote from the same book. Around the time I turned five, some guy on the street said, "Yo, you're not supposed to be wearing those clothes. Why not?" I always got defensive about this because everyone was always telling me, "Because you have a dick." Well, what's a dick? I didn't know what it was. Boys have dicks and girls have pussies. What's a pussy? A vagina. Vagina? I didn't even know how to say the word. No, vagina. Oh, okay. Then he said, "So, you're not a girl, you have a dick." Well, what's a dick? That thing you have between your legs. And I'm like, "Well, I thought everyone has that." No, not everyone has that. I thought the man was crazy." I remember a time when we used to have our parents' permission to participate in what was called Sex Ed, the scientific version, where boys and girls were separated. Now our children have access to graphic sexual material without parental consent that has no scientific foundation. Restore the dignity and protect our children that they deserve. Do not sacrifice them to the gods of hedism and provision that want to rob them of their brief time as innocents. If we fail to throw out these books and refuse this infiltration of pornography, then let the ages record all of us colluding with the stealers of innocence. Stand with me and others who are speaking today and just say no to pornography access for our students by removing inappropriate books from our public school libraries. I thank you kindly for listening to my speech, and I hope you take this topic as seriously as you do concerning COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next, Ms. Cheryl Gay. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Gay.
My name is Cheryl Gay. I'm a lifelong Chatham County resident. I'm a graduate of Jenkins High School and Armstrong, when it was Armstrong State College. I've been following this book controversy for the past few months. When I would hear about it in other states, I was sure those books weren't here, but as you can hear from the previous reader, they are here, and there are books even worse than some of the ones we read about in other systems. Dr. Buck, I commend and support your decision to bring civility to these meetings and no profanity. That's a reasonable approach for adults and children. In 2017, our city council took a stand for civility when an alderman was formally censored for calling an adult female reporter the C-word. I can't say that word, I think y'all know what I'm talking about. But yeah, there were books in our media centers that include the C-word and the P-word. And we can't encourage students to read books that are full of the worst profanity and demeaning sexual representations of men and women. And then act shocked when these students internalize that, and it becomes who they are. You are what you read. So I'm going to read a couple of passages, and you need to know that, I'm just picking a few, but I didn't, these aren't just cherry pick, like the one best section of a book. I could spend 15 or 20 minutes just from this one book of things, but, and I'm going to spell the words, I can't say them. "They leave the room complaining about how stupid I am. As soon as they're out of the door, Marisol shoves me away from bed, disgusting puta." That's actually a Spanish profanity. So we're teaching profanity in other languages. "You smell like PUSSY through your holy panties." Another section from Allegedly by Tiffany Jackson. "What the FUCK is taking so damn long, the girl's mother grunts. I can't believe this FUCKINGSHIT, and you go and FUCK him again." Allegedly is found at Beach, Islands, New Hampstead, Savannah Arts, Savannah High, Johnson, Windsor, and Tompkins. And there's one other book I want to talk about, it's Gender Queer by Maya Kababi. It's only in Islands Elementary, I'm excuse me, Islands High School. It's a graphic novel, which means it's drawings, but it has multiple drawings. It depict one male giving oral sex to another male, and it shows it totally completely like it would be. It's, it's, there's pictures of masturbation, there's dialogue debating the merits of various types of pornography. Amazon describes Gender Queer as erotic gay fanfiction. And this is some dialogue that's under one of the drawings of a boy masturbating. "Memeorably, I got off the ones while driving just by rubbing the front of my jeans and imagining getting a blowjob." This school system is betraying parents' trust when books like this are allowed to be in the school system. There need to be safeguards and procedures so that these books are not only removed, but don't come back into the system. These books are outrageous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gay. Our next speaker is Dr. Barry Crapkow. Just give her a chance, doctor. It's all ideas for us, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. This is my second time here before the board. I appreciate the opportunity for free speech. And I will say that you probably from the first few speakers already got to drift of the conversation, which is that how is it there are these books in the public school libraries? That's, that I think is the prevailing question. We research this, and we get the impression that you don't even know that some of these books are in the middle schools and the high schools, which raises the question of what's the oversight? Just like the last time I was here, I was asking the question about what was the oversight to bring social, emotional learning, which leads to CRT? What was the oversight in that process? So that's a very big deal. I have before me a very interesting book called The Origins of Totalitarianism. And if you read books about the origins of totalitarianism, tyranny, what is one of the things that's often done? It's the degradation of society, is it not? Fill people's mind with polluted ideas, fill them with ideas that are obscene, and degrade human sexuality, which is for the purpose of creating children so we can have public schools and have public school libraries. That's the purpose of human sexuality. Now, keep in mind, this is not about censorship. We also believe in the First Amendment. Nobody's here talking about censorship. These books may be perceived by others as good works of whatever, and adults are allowed to read them. So be it. That's not why we're here. Why is this being put in access to these children and adolescents? Ask yourselves the question. You all have children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews. Would you be reading the things you just heard to them? Would you allow them to go to a movie that had that? You would? You're shaking your head, you would? Really? Okay. Yeah, well, that's, that's very interesting that you're comfortable with this degree of degradation being approved for your children. So, so if, if you're listening, you know, to what you'd be reading to your children, the men we perform for, this is for a book by Ellen Hopkins called Tricks. The men we perform for are like when we dance with each other breast to breast or belly to ass. I so enjoy reducing them to masturbation. It's like they are masturbating for me, I can control when they come by how they move. So can you imagine yourself sitting there reading this to your children and grandchildren, your nieces and your nephews? Do you think that sounds appropriate? We don't. We don't think it's appropriate, and we don't think you've investigated this, and we don't think you've given it much thought, but we don't know. Once again, we don't know what exactly the board's involvement is with this and whether it's actually taken the time to look into this and made a decision about what books are appropriate. So we would appreciate you doing that. And if I could have an extra 30 seconds, I would like to say, I'm a medical doctor. I've been in medicine for, this is going into my fifth decade. You should know what's the fastest way to herd immunity. Do you know? Get a disease, a virus, highly transmissible with low severity to health. Therefore, taking off your masks and allowing people to be able to be exposed to Omicron is actually the fastest way to herd immunity, herd immunity, excuse me. And if you, and if you read alternative, and by alternative, I'm not talking about alternative medicine doctors, people like Peter McCullough from Baylor University, a famous cardiologist, epidemiologist. This point has been discussed over and over again. This pandemic can come to an end very quickly by removing the masks, allowing the transmission to develop what? The most important safeguard of all humanity in these cases, something our Creator gave us, natural immunity. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Ms. Mazzaroni. Welcome, Ms. Mazzaroni.
Thank you. I am Beth Mazzaroni, presenting as a retired reading specialist, reading recovery teacher of 12 years with a master's in reading education and a reading recovery certification. of 12 years with a master's in reading education and a reading recovery certification from Ohio State University. I worked primarily with students from underserved neighborhoods. Learning to read is the number one survival skill for all students, but especially important survival skill for those underserved children, to transport them out of their current circumstances and model for them how to find and use their gifts. Whether it was learning that things don't always go your way from Alexander and the Terrible, Horrible, No Good, Very Bad Day, to the Harry Potter series that teaches that life's choices determine our own destinies. The characters model for us how to grapple with our past circumstances and have hope in spite of it. Unfortunately, in today's middle and high school libraries, and yes, even in Savannah Chatham County, instead of finding role models in books, students are frequently finding a normalization of teenage sex without the age of consent ever being mentioned. Sexual assault is even glorified in some cases. In addition to sex, these books normalize suicide, drugs, cutting, prostitution, rape, incest, hatred, porn, abuse, and the debasement of women. They also suggest that all children must make gender choices sooner than later in all of this before their prefrontal cortex or their rational brain is fully developed, which usually happens around age 18. Consider the message that this passage from Felix Ever After by Kason Callender sends to students at Islands, Jenkins, Groves, Savannah Arts, Savannah High, and Johnson who choose to read this book. I quote from a girl character. "It wasn't until I was 12, almost five years ago now, that I read this book that had a trans character in it. I Am Jay by Chris Bean. Reading about Jay, it was like, I don't know, not only did a light bulb go off in me, but the sun itself came out from behind these eternal clouds and everything inside me blazed with the realization, I'm a guy." Unquote. To be clear, consenting adults, and the pivotal word is adults, should have the freedom to choose their sexual practice, gender identification, and be respected under the law. However, a passage like I just read paints the heavy gravity decision about gender choice to be as benign as choosing a college and paints it as an appropriate decision to make at age 12 without professional counseling or before many have even gone through puberty. Did you know that Islands High houses one of the most egregious examples of pornography entitled Gender Queer and pictures cartoons of young boys giving oral sex? I include that in your packet I'll leave today as an example. I also include in your packet a list of the research our team has done with the electronic card catalog that my open records request generated, identifying the books we have found in each middle and high school library. Please note, I'm sure there are many more book titles we've missed. We didn't have a password to search the Galileo Virtual Library System, but it's been noted by an expert, Noel Cahayan, a sex ed teacher and director of ProtectStudentHealthGeorgia.com, that within five clicks of Galileo, graphic sexuality is currently available to those 11 and up due to the lack of filters in place in Georgia. I include the link for her recent interview in your packet. Noel also makes us aware that Georgia Code, while making it illegal for anyone to share obscenity with underage slash minor children, includes two loopholes that exclude school and public libraries from this law. Where is the bill that writes this wrong with school libraries? I will close with two of our many examples, one heterosexual and one homosexual. Caution, extremely graphic language in both. From Monday's Not Coming by Tiffany Jackson, housed in Beach, Islands, Jenkins, Savannah High, Johnson, and Windsor Forest, I quote, "Me and Monday, we did do something." He took a deep breath. "She sucked my D I C K. I didn't really want it to happen. It just kinda did." Her top lip curled up. "Wait a minute, is that what was really going on? She did your homework and you ate her COOCHIE? Is that why you crying? Because Monday's not around to do your homework no more?" Unquote. From the book All Boys Aren't Blue by George Johnson that is housed in Islands, Jenkins, Savannah High, and two middle schools, Coastal and LSK8, "He reached his hand down and pulled out my D I C K. He quickly went to giving me H E A D. I just sat back and enjoyed it, as I could tell he was too. He didn't know I was a virgin and I did my best to ask, act dominant like my favorite porn star." Unquote. In this time of division on so many issues and now armed with this information, I challenge all parents, school board members, and school personnel to join me and others today and unite to protect our children from pornography by purging our school libraries of inappropriate books. If not you, then who? In addition, I challenge all politicians to have the courage to stand up to the school lobbyists, and yes, there are school lobbyists, and pass a bill to close the loophole of school libraries as it relates to obscenity. If not you, then who? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Ms. Geraldine Gibbs. Welcome, Ms. Gibbs.
Hello, Alice. I've just been introduced. My name is Geraldine Gibbs. I'm a mother, a grandmother, a taxpayer of Chatham County. When I look around this room, I see people who are probably parents, grandparents, maybe if you're old like me, and maybe an aunt and uncle, but certainly people are concerned about children. So I have to believe that you were not previously aware that books inappropriate for children were in our school libraries. Before recently, no one was aware. In fact, the National Child Traumatic Stress Network even stated that children and young people should be protected in the online space in the same way that they are protected in the offline world. Well, apparently even they weren't aware of the offline world in our school libraries and the lack of protection there. Everyone from psychologists to the American Bar Association directs our attention and their warnings about sexual content to the internet, not to our hallowed schools. Ignorant as they all were or have been of the content of our libraries, they are very aware of the harm that sexually explicit contact, hatred, and swear words pose for our children. It is believed that early exposure to sexual content may have a profound effect on children's values, attitudes, and behaviors. The American Bar Association warns that exposure to sexual content can compromise a young person's ability to establish and maintain healthy intimate relationships. And the research is just beginning to assess the potential damage. So the goal here isn't to avoid the subject, and I, I think that you should probably address with your children very specifically these issues about sex and relationships. And they get, they get it from their most trusted source, you, their parents, their grandparents, that individual in their lives who's concerned about them and their personal interests, and they're looking out for their personal interest. So that's where we want them to learn this, not from Sherman Alexie, who wrote The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. This book contains sexual language and content, X-rated drawings, and hatred for white people. And I'm going to say these words. I hope you don't kick me out, but they're in the book. The nigger word, the fuck word, the dick word are used over and over again. I'm sure you don't like hearing these words, and I don't like saying them, but these are the words, the content, the drawings that our children are exposed to. And even worse, think about this. These children must think that the adults around them approve of this language, this behavior, this explicitness and sexuality. It's being normalized for them. The National Child Traumatic Stress Network counsels parents on how important it is to give clear, positive messages about modesty, boundaries, and privacy. And children need these messages as they move through childhood, even through high school. Meanwhile, Alexie is singing praises of naked women and masturbating and boasting how incredibly good he is, he is at it, from the pages of his book. I have the pages here and I could read them if you want, if you want me to. I don't want to, but if you think it's important, I will. Think it's important? Thank you. I will say that at one point, he talks about the curves of girls and the curvier curves of women on the pages where he goes hormonal. What's a grown man doing talking about the curves of girls? And what girls, anyway? The girls in high school or middle school who are reading this book? How creepy is that? What are they supposed to do? See themselves reflected on these pages? This is a disturbing book written by a disturbed individual. Alexie has his own sexual demons. He was credibly charged with sexual harassment by 20 women a few years ago, all, all of them authors. His awards were rescinded, his books removed from various lists and bookstores. But this book is in the libraries of the following high schools here in Savannah. Islands, Beach, Jenkins, New Hampstead, Savannah Arts, Savannah High, Johnson, and Tompkins. It is also in the libraries of two middle schools, Coastal and Mercer. Some might say, gee whiz, Sherman Alexie is an internationally known author. I would reply, isn't it time we look past fame, money, and power and success to protect our children? Sexually charged literature in our schools creates a situation where our children are overexposed and underprepared. The potential damage is documented and the warnings are addressed everywhere, in the movies, online, everywhere except where you'd expect it to occur, you'd least expect it to occur, which is in our schools. So I'm asking that you remove this book and others like it from our public school libraries. We're counting on you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Next speaker is Ms. Brooks, Ms. Frankie Brooks.
Dr. Buck, I have a packet for you all and all the information on the verdict.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Brooks.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Frankie Brooks and I'm a follower of Jesus and a parent of two teenagers in the Savannah Chatham County School District. I was upset to learn about some of the library books within our school system that contain triggering sexual material that is easily accessible by students. Reading pornographic material teaches boys to sexually objectify girls, to see them as sex objects or sexual commodities instead of human beings made in the image of God. These kind of books foster the idea that the degradation of females is acceptable, and oftentimes these books incorporate violence against girls, which in turn normalizes and promotes aggressive behaviors and speech in teenagers. It is these types of books that is helping to turn our culture into a highly sexualized and volatile world where morals and self-control are nowhere to be found and consequences like teenage pregnancies, abortions, and sexually transmitted diseases are rampant, as well as physical abuse among young people. I have two short excerpts from two different books I like to read, and just by the titles of the books themselves, you can see they are both very dark books and can consciously, consciously, and subconsciously cause fear in children. The first excerpt is from Murder Trending by Gretchen McNeil, housed at Islands, Jenkins, Johnson, and Windsor Forest. This book is categorized as dystopian fiction, and in summary, and I just pulled these descriptions right off the internet, this read is a biting satire of reality shows in today's US political atmosphere. Seventeen-year-old Dee Guerrero is framed for the murder of her stepsister, then dropped into a nightmarish island in San Francisco Bay where she must fight for her life against state-sponsored killers. Welcome to the near future, where good and honest citizens can enjoy watching the executions of society's most infamous convicted felons streaming live on the Postman app from the suburbanized prison island Alcatraz. Here is an excerpt from the book. Jasper wasn't even my boyfriend, just this dude I did some hacking with every once in a while. He was pretty basic, library systems, low security, SHIT, not in my league at all, but he had a big D I C K. Sometimes a girl just needs a big D I C K. Applying the Motion Picture Association of America rating guidelines to this book, Murder Trending is rated R for language and sexual language. The second excerpt is from a book titled Monday's Not Coming from Tiffany Jackson, which Beth Mazzaroni also read an excerpt from. This one is housed at Beach, Islands, Jenkins, Savannah High, Johnson, and Windsor Forest. This book is categorized as mystery, thriller, suspense fiction, and in summary, this is a gripping novel about the mystery of one teenage girl's disappearance and the traumatic effects of the truth. Claudia asks her parents, teachers, classmates, and even the police to help her find her friend Monday, but nothing happens. Claudia decides to start her own investigation and what she finds will change her forever. Here is the excerpt. "I see her coming out of some car in some tight AAS shorts, talking fast, telling me she's about to leave me. I grab her by the neck and start punching her. She wanted to be all big and bad, trying to face me like a grown AAS woman. She's going to get beat like a grown woman." The Motion Picture Association of America rates this book R for language, sexual language content, inappropriate conduct, and mature topics. Now, for those of you that have sons and daughters, I want you to imagine these sentences coming out of their mouths. It's pretty horrifying, isn't it? Well, when teenagers read these type of literature, putting those thoughts and words in their heads, it can't be undone, and they could likely start talking like this or acting out these scenes because words have power and influence, especially over children. This is how brainwashing or mind control happens, by putting thoughts into children's minds by the books they read. I am asking that you please remove these inappropriate books from the schools for the health and well-being of the students of SEC PSS. I'm not asking for you to ban the books. I am asking you to choose in helping to protect the hearts and the minds of this younger generation in hopes of positively impacting our schools and community for the better. This is not about censorship. This is not about control. This is about loving and caring for the children of the public school system here in Savannah. God bless you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Robyn. Robyn?
Yes, sir. My name is Pete Robyn, R O B Y N. I'm a taxpaying resident of Savannah, Georgia. I'm the son of a World War II vet. I'm a historian. I'm a patriot. I'm a Christian. The Savannah County, Savannah Chatham County Public School System needs to be dissolved. It's too big, too expensive, too wasteful. You're out of touch with parents. You dispense sexual deviancy. You promote SEL, lie to us about the CRT. Your high-handed, autocratic, and arrogant approach to education does not work. You force children to wear face masks that according to the CDC does nothing to stop a virus. And two months ago, I dropped off the paper to you. Remember that? The 146-page report? Remember that? In, in November. I was working December. I couldn't be here, but I'm here now. I gave you this thick a report because obviously you hadn't read the emails. I gave you this thick a report, because obviously you hadn't read the emails. I personally believe that your force, your requirement to force children to wear masks is nothing even public safety and nothing you know it. It is the political left in this country, and their ardent desire to raise up a generation of subservient, obedient robots, rather than free-thinking, critical-thinking, free-loving Americans. That's what this is about. No joke. You're trying to create in these children a mindset that you are to be subservient to the government, and you are to obey, no questions asked, and don't think, and don't think for yourself. That's what your face masks on children is about. And we know it. The criminal system needs to be dissolved and replaced with 10 mini-school systems, one in each district, each independent of each other. This will create a sense of community in the school districts. Parents and teachers and administrators will become closer, have a closer wire of communication. This will benefit basically for the schools, for the children mainly. When in a small setting, parents and administrators could get closer together, better communication, education would improve, children would see their parents getting involved in the school system. Those mini-school districts would then be able to compete educationally, the same way sports teams compete on the athletic fields, basketball courts. Students could compete intellectually between different districts. When the final days of this disgraceful, you guys are disgraceful. You hear these ladies, you guys are disgraceful. The final days of this board should set up a fund. The building at Bull and Olga Thorpe, your current headquarters, should be sold, and other assets sold, put into a fund, which will be worth $7 million by the end of the year. The first million should be divided equally as a bonus to the police, firemen, and first responders. The remainder should be divided equally amongst the property taxpayers from whom the money You guys should go away. You have failed this, you're disgraced, you continue wearing masks, it's a shraide, cleaning office is theater. You waste a half an hour of our time talking about the COVID is dead, it no longer exists. The COVID that was unleashed on the world by the Chinese Communist Party is gone. You should know this. How is that you do not know this? How do you not know this? And the Omicron has not killed a single person worldwide. In fact, it's a benefit. It puts in, everybody who gets it, you get natural immunities which prevent you from getting further diseases and viruses. Why do you not know this? You're unbelievable, unbelievable. Pornography in schools, face masks, child abuse is what this is about. This whole thing should be dissolved, and we should have 10 new mini-school districts in Chatham County, and we will be the example for the entire country. And this stupid mask.
Thank you, sir. Put your mask back on now that you leave, please. If you're going to sit in meetings, sir, you'll put your mask on or you'll leave. Would you ask him to leave, please, gentlemen? Our next speaker is, I'm not certain, Laster, perhaps? Is that? Okay, I just... This is on calendar accountability, is that correct?
Good afternoon, Dr. Buck and the Board. I spoke before the Board several months ago when we moved to Savannah, and I'm happy to be here with you again today.
Can you give us your name again, please, ma'am?
Yes, it's Virginia Laster, L A S T N E R.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm here today to speak about your calendar and also an acronym I'm just going to call ACT, Accountability, Communication, and Transparency. But firstly, with regards to your calendar for the upcoming 2223 school year. In my introduction a couple of months ago, I mentioned I spent 20 years serving both on private and public school boards. I have a lot of experience in finance, 30-year professional. And we have, I found during that time that it is incredibly important to involve the community in the discussion of a budget long before one would get to a May discussion of the military rate. I noticed here on the proposed calendar that here in Savannah, we would not be meeting in the evening until May 18th, which by that time, in my experience, most budgets are pretty well-baked. And I would ask that the Board consider a situation whereby the Board Chair of the Finance Function, along with the liaisons from the Administration, conduct one or two budget workshops, preferably in the evening, preferably at a location that's much more accessible to many of our parents, perhaps in the auditorium of one of our larger high schools, wherein we go through the budget. Parents and taxpayers are very concerned about the year that our children went through remote learning, very concerned about the percentage of our students that are functioning at or above the grade level in language arts, math, and sciences. They want to know where the money is going in terms of helping us to backfill for that very difficult year, and I do know that the Administration and the teaching staff across the district has worked very hard, but there's much more to do. These parents are looking for assistance before, during, and after school. They want to see the money in the classroom. They challenge me when we look at relatively flat enrollment over the past decade, and I know I'm making a broad brush, so bear with me, but relatively flat enrollment and our spend, both inflation-adjusted and gross, is almost 50% higher. Where is that money going? We need to make sure the taxpayers, and importantly, the parents, understand the priorities of the Board and what actions are being taken under the Board principles to make sure that we're spending the money in the most efficient way to bring all of our students up to grade. Just very quickly, one of the guiding principles of this Board. Number two, the academic achievement of students will be at a level that will enable them, upon graduation from high school, to enter the college or workforce fully prepared to be successful without the need of remediation. We need to do any remediation now. We need to make sure the dollars are right there with the children, not doing things that we'd like to do, but that we must do. And so I encourage you to do these budget workshops early in the year, so that you can hear the parents' concerns, so that taxpayers who have experience in these matters can have an opportunity to share with you in a civil and constructive manner. And the last thing, that's all about the calendar, but I do hope that you think about that. This is a lovely facility, but let's face it, unless you're retired or you're here on a special purpose to get an award like that lovely young man earlier, it's tough to get away too in the afternoon. Let's get out there and have these workshops where folks can hear you and hear your story and hear the good things that are being done. But lastly, very quickly, in following this school order the last nine months, many points are raised during these public sessions, during the public comments section of your meeting. I think it might be helpful for you to consider having an extra tab on your Board page where these questions or concerns are documented, and then the Board and the Administration have an opportunity to log their response to these concerns. On two points, number one, it closes the circle, it answers the question. Number two, hopefully over the years, you won't have duplication of effort. And again, on that A C T, Accountability, Communication, Transparency, I think it would serve that purpose, to get both sides documented and have that historical record. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, ma'am, for your interest. I appreciate it. Next is Broderick, I believe it's Deb Broderick. Oh, that's, no, that's not right, obviously. Hey, is it Broderick?
Well, this is a surprise. I didn't really expect to have a chance to speak after signing in last, so I appreciate I don't have a prepared paper or process which to read to you or to give you direction. I just want to ask a question, first of all. For those of you that have heard the complaints today, the request to remove the filthy books from the libraries, the degrading context of volumes of material that affect our children, how many of you are aware or were aware or have heard of the title of any of those books? How many of you have had a chance to discuss with anyone who selects those books? How many of you have had that chance to read the list of those that are going into our schools? How many of you would care to read the list of those going into our schools in order to make a difference? I see. Therein lies one of the problems. Secondly, I've heard a lot of minutes on COVID, COVID protection, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not going to discuss COVID because as someone spoke, the truth is out there, for those who want to see. But I am going to say that I have heard about COVID, and I have heard about the horrible reading material that is available to our students, but I have not yet heard anyone discuss anything about what you plan to do to elevate our children's education to a higher level. I haven't heard one person speak about curriculum of the schools, how you're going to improve the studies, how are you going to get the minds filled with reading, writing, arithmetic, and history. This is why we are here. This is why you were elected or positioned in your position. It is your job to care for the children's minds in order to elevate them to a higher standard of learning and a higher level. And most of you, most of you, depending on your age, did have that opportunity at one time. It is not right, it is not fair, it is not biblical, it is not constitutional to deny these children, our children, your children, our future. It is not right, nor is it fair, nor is it your privilege, nor your choice, to condone this kind of service to our children. It is your place, in your positioning, to elevate our children in a higher education with matters that will have them excel in life, which will not teach them hate amongst themselves, which will not teach them that differences amongst yourselves rank you in another caste system. I thought that was in India in different places, but I see that it's highly becoming phenomenal in the United States. We are to raise the graduation levels of these children. I'm not even sure what the testing is now for the children. Is there proper testing to see that these kids are ready for jobs? Do they have life skills? Can they do a math problem? Can they figure out how to work in a lumberyard? Or can they figure out how to work as an architect? Have they learned proper math and skills? Do they know from whence history came? Is that even going on or taught anymore? We need to go back and implement civics into every school in this nation. And we probably should go back, by the way and the direction that the colleges are going now, we should definitely go back and implement something that we used to call, when you would go to, and I probably just forgot the name, when you would have a class in school where it would talk, teach you a skill, where you could go out and be ready to make money. Colleges not for everybody, and most colleges today isn't for anybody. So I'm asking you to reevaluate why you are here, and for those of you who do not care for God, I will pray for you. For those of you who were ever raised in a Christian home or ever had any relationship with God or affiliation with Him whatsoever, I'm asking you to reach back to your roots. And if you haven't gotten it, I suggest highly that you do some reading in the Bible, might educate you.
Your time is up, ma'am.
My time is up, and I hope this does not fall on deaf ears, because the people of Chatham County are not accepting what has been happening any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is A. Brandon, I believe, Bran.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon. Thank you very much. I'm not going to say too much right now, because much has already been said. I'd like to get some answers. I'd like you to be able to say something now. I want answers to what are you going to do about the books in the library we've been talking about for the schools? I want to know what plans you have for reviewing, what is ordered to put into the schools, who is responsible for doing that, some sort of a plan. I want to be advised, very important word. We should be advised of what you're doing. You should want to be able to educate us as you're supposed to educate the children. And I'd like right now to stop and use the rest of my time, and as much as you'd like to have, for each one of you to tell me what are you doing about these problems without researching COVID.
Sir, this is, the Board meeting is, at this point, is set aside for appearances from the public. We do not engage in questions answered back. We will, if you choose to ask for that, I will make certain that you do get some answers back, but not at this time. And what I've heard you say is you want to see what will be done about the books, and whether or not any action will be taken, and advise you of that. I will be happy, more than happy, to respond to you in that way, sir.
I appreciate that, and I'll hold you to that. I remember you from way back at Armstrong, Dr. Buck. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Tell me your first name, please, sir.
Alex.
Alex, okay. Thank you, sir.
And by the way, I've had two shots. I don't know why we still have to wear the mask, we're supposed to be immune.
Well, I agree with you, sir, but the doctors keep telling us we need to wear them, and so we're wearing them. I would love to take mine off too, and I hope sometime soon we can.
And they have studies showing the way these masks are made.
We, yes.
The virus is smaller, you can get right through it like sand going through a tennis racket.
Right. Thank you, sir.
So they don't do that much good. Thank you.
That was our last speaker. Moving on, we have Board of Education matters, we have several policies. I'll ask Mr. Havering to come up quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Board President, taking the Board through the policy action under Board
Thank you, Mr. Board President, taking the board through the policy action under Board Matters. Do you have two policy reviews for the board on this agenda? Item 7.01 and item 7.02. Your first policy review is Policy DID entitled "Audits." Falls under the ownership of the Finance Department. This is a four-year review. And first reader, the main changes you'll find is language, uh, it has been edited to really clarify existing language. And we've also found that through this process that the regulation, being as specific as it is, created some redundancies in the overarching requirements of the policy. So we could and would recommend a deletion of the regulation.
Any, uh, any questions, any concerns, any things you think should be looked at? We move forward then?
Thank you, sir. Item 7.02. Again, this is a four-year policy review, first reader. This particular area falls under the ownership of Operations Department and under the Transportation Department, Operations Division and Transportation Department. Primarily needed to review this as we went through it to ensure that the regulation language aligned clearly with policy language. And also it gave us an opportunity to look at this very closely and ensure that the policy language is written in a way that does not create conflicts for us when we do find that we have resource issues such as staffing shortages, and we're limited in the amount of transportation that we can provide extensively across the entire district.
Any, uh, questions, concerns? Thank, uh, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the, I know I sent an email about, uh, also the word of assigned. I don't know if you had a chance to look through that, uh, but it's the second, well, one, two, fourth paragraph down. Um, it's in there. Um, also, I just do want to make sure that we can figure out some way to work on that about the IDs and transportation.
Yeah, definitely. We did, uh, take that into account and did, uh, provide a written response to the board. Uh, we will do, do a double check on that word, "assigned." Of course, it's important that we all understand, too, the, the definition of the word as "assigned" is used properly throughout the policy language as well, as in a student that may be assigned, as in routed versus a zoned school. But for consistency, we appreciate that observation. We'll do a, a double check on that. Students, for example, that might have an IEP or some sort of a requirement of, say, a 504 plan or other legal requirement where transportation is required, the district is certainly providing that transportation. And if the board feels that that needs to be enumerated in policy language, we can certainly add that.
Well, it says that. It says that already, doesn't it?
I do want to reiterate that we did send a very detailed response to those questions. So if you'll check your email, you'll see that information available to you.
Thank you. Any other comments from other board members, questions? Here none. Moving on, please.
We'll turn over items 7.03, 7.04, and 7.05 to the Board Chair for action on Board Officers' Calendar of Meetings and Committee Appointments.
Uh, next item on our agenda is the election of Board Officers. Uh, I would tell the public that this is, uh, an election done within the board, by the board, and we select a Vice President, a Vice President Pro Tempera, and an Assistant Secretary each year. The Superintendent serves as the Treasurer and a Secretary Ex officio of the Board. And the Chief Financial Officer serves as Assistant Treasurer. Each of these are one-year terms. This year, Mr. Cashmore has served as Vice President, and Dr. Tanya Howard-Hall has served as our Vice President Pro Tempera. And because they're one-year terms, they will not be succeeding themselves in essence. But I wanted to give my personal thanks to the two of them for the meetings arranging to be sometimes changed at the last minute when we needed to, coming to extra meetings when we needed to have those. And Dr. Howard-Hall and Mr. Cashmore, thank you very much for serving the boards like you have this year. I am open to accepting, A., Mr. Cashmore?
We have a, um, we've had a tradition on the board to try to build our bench depth and give, uh, people experience in various leadership positions as committee chairs and also in these Vice President and Pro Tem positions. So, in that spirit, I nominate Dr. Howard-Hall as Vice President and Dr. Breenman as, uh, Vice President Pro Tem.
Heard of, uh, before you second, I would say remembering that Mrs. Mary Davis-Brown will also be in that group as Assistant Secretary. Uh, and we'll, we'll just add, I mean, she's the one that does the minutes, so she ought to be able to add her. But, uh, do I have a motion that we, uh, close the nominations? Ms. Hall moves that. All in favor of closing the nominations, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. All in favor of the motion as stated, where Dr. Howard-Hall is the Vice President, and Dr. Breenman, goodness gracious, we've got a lot of doctors in this group. Uh, Dr. Breenman is Vice President Pro Tempera and, uh, Tempera, and, uh, Ms. Mary Davis-Brown as the Assistant Secretary. Ms. Brown, you got to go get another degree. All in favor of that motion, raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Congratulations to all of you as we move forward for another year. I appreciate you. Next is the 200, uh, 200, 2022 calendar of, of our board meetings. Uh, in partial response to, uh, what the Speaker from the citizens just spoke about, public hearings and et cetera, uh, I would just want to say to the public that our most successful public hearings throughout the years have been district hearings where board members hosted district meetings that they answered questions. It was usually done in home ground, and it was always successful. We have not been able to do that throughout the pandemic. I would certainly hope that we will be able to do that. Secondly, uh, we have heard before about night meetings. Uh, and I would only say once again, I'm sure we'll try them somewhere along the way. But even at the budget meetings, when we have a budget meeting, as board members know and the staff knows, we're lucky if we get 10 people here. And, uh, in regular times, pre-pandemic, we always had a packed house of public and parents at meetings at 2:00 in the afternoon. So we will continue to examine that. We see very, um, we take very seriously our own obligation to the public, but we will always be looking at ways to make certain that the public knows what we're doing and how, how we can hear them better. So, that's just me. 2002 calendar, you've got your listing there. Thus be it resolved that the 2002 calendar of Board of Education meetings be adopted. Ms. Hines moves. Is there a second? Second, Dr. Howard-Hall. Does Hines anything? Dr. Howard-Hall, anything? Any comments from Mr. Cashmore?
Um, thank you, Dr. Buck. Um, to your earlier comments about our meetings, I would say that even though, um, we haven't had as many in-person district meetings, many of us are still attending PTA or school council meetings. I've done a lot of Zoom, PTA, and school council meetings, and I know other colleagues have, have done that as well. So I know, um, we're still talking to folks in our district.
Right.
Uh, we just haven't had as many, um, large, um, in-person meetings as we had in past years. Um, second, I'm supportive of the calendar. Um, I, for years since I've been on this board, I've talked about, you know, having more night meetings, and every time we do, there's one person from the public there or none. Um, we go through a cycle there. Um, if my colleague, if a majority of the colleagues would support it, I would support maybe having, trying to have a night meeting like the September or October meeting of the year. We're having one in May. We're having one in June. I'm just throwing it out there, um, that would be one-third of our meetings would be evening. Um, making the suggestion for a discussion.
Uh, Dr. Hoskins-Brown, you know, I'd like to respond. Thank you. Yeah, I, I bear witness that when we have the evening meeting, people don't come. Um, however, this is a different political climate, so it may be that folks would demonstrate interest. Um, the request at today's meeting was not just to have an evening meeting, which she did mention, but she specifically asked for an evening meeting that occurred earlier than May so that budget discussion, feedback on the budget could be received. So, um, I would be open to accommodating an evening meeting, but I think that if we're, if we're going to do that, that perhaps having it earlier, um, not only would it accommodate the request to have it sometime like March or so, but also, um, an evening meeting in the fall is a meeting, um, where the days are shorter and it's darker and may represent a safety issue for individuals.
I would like to suggest this without changing the motion. I would like to suggest, I believe that I'm correct in saying that we can make two changes to the approved meeting schedule during the year. Uh, we've done that before. If that's the case, then we could add it at a time, a night meeting, when we wanted to. That would be one way of handling it. What are you looking at?
Um, so the mo-, so the motion would be to ex, to approve the calendar as published with the change, that there be two, uh, changes in the future?
I had always been told we could make two changes in the calendar of meetings that we vote on at this meeting.
By statute?
Right, right. And I, you know, I don't know that's for sure, but Deborah Andrews always told me that, and.
Holiday could certainly provide feedback on that under the auspice of state code for public meetings.
If you want to change the motion, that's fine. Secondly, I would say, uh, instead of a night board meeting, I would suggest a night forum on the budget earlier as the lady. It, we're not going to take any action at that board meeting anyway. So calling it a forum, it does not have to meet all the same requirements, but we would have it at night. So, yes, Ms. Hall has got her hand up first.
Am I correct that our public hearing number one, two, and three are supposed to be at specific times right before the final adoption, or can that happen? I mean, the meeting that's for June 15th, that could happen on April 13th? Is that correct? That's what I thought, so.
They're advertising the news, I don't know.
Having an earlier meeting at night would not answer the thing of the budget. So, yes, your idea of a forum, that might be a better idea than calling it one of our regular forums.
Dr. Hoskins-Brown?
My only comment to that is that, that, um, and I, I wrote down her name and I can't find my notes, but the, but the person who spoke to us today made a suggestion, but she's not the first one to make that request. And I think it is a disservice to previous speakers who've made the request to tailor our action on one individual today. And so I understand that having an evening forum would meet the needs of budget discussion because it is true, we would just be giving feedback on the budget. If there are other items that individuals would want to address, that modification to the calendar would not address the request that we've had for an evening activity from those folks. Um, so I, I just offer that for consideration. I also do support what you said about our district meetings. We have not been having them recently, but our proficiency in the virtual environment will make that maybe more possible now than it has been.
Okay, we've got the resolution as it is stated. Uh, you've heard two other suggestions out there. Is there anyone who would choose to amend the motion to include one or both of those suggestions? Before I get that, Mr. Johnson has had his thing up for an hour and a half.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I do, I, I would agree with Mr. Cashmore that we need to at least have one of these 2:00 meetings be changed to night. Um, and as, uh, Dr. Hoskins-Brown said, we are in a different political climate than we've ever been before, even pre-pandemic. We have a lot of interest in school board, um, policy and politics these days, and I think it would show a, um, a bit of goodwill to the public if we were to at least have changed one of these. Um, I like the idea of the September, October one, um, to an evening, like, um, Mr. Cashmore said. Um, so I guess in that case, I'll, I make a motion that we amend the calen-, the proposed calendar for the September 7th meeting to be changed to, uh, 6:00 PM.
Mr. Johnson has moved an amendment to the, of initial resolution. Is there a second to that amendment that he's just made? Mr. Cashmore seconded that. Anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Cashmore, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I, I mean, going back to the discussion about the forum versus the formal meeting prior to the budget, part of the challenge having it too early is we don't have a budget, number one. We don't know what the mileage rate is, number two. So often, we start talking in February, March, and April, and May about here are board goals, here are superintendent's strategy. If we have the money, here's where we're going to put it. But if we don't have the money, um, and we might need to find $15 million because of changes to the DRS or whatever. So, um, there's a challenge there. I'm, I'm seconding the motion for the fall. Um, I would also support a further public meeting prior to the budget when there can be
Well, why don't we get this voted, this voted, and then we'll go back to the budget thing.
And I just observed that the purpose of this motion is to set your regular meetings. Once you've done that, those meetings are set. Frankly, it's gonna have to be noticed, though, if you do anyway, but that's the regular meetings. Everything else is special. You can have those anytime. You can't cancel your regular meetings because you're obligated to have a meeting. And so that's the purpose of the regular meeting is to do that. Having the time is a role, but. So it doesn't make you a doctor there, but you don't have to be, be separate. The other meetings are special.
Dr. Hoskins-Brown?
I appreciate the legal decoupling. Um, I think that's very helpful. Um, on the matter of the extra meeting prior to the budget process, we, we've just been asked to listen. We don't have to have all this preparation to listen. If you listen to the comments, and I don't agree with all the comments that were held, that were, that were given, but the comment was that people have reaction and thoughts about how spending occurs in relation to their past experience. It wasn't in reaction to, they didn't want time to talk about the budget being proposed. They wanted to reflect on the spending that they have witnessed. And so it doesn't really matter that the budget won't be prepared. And in fact, I think it would demonstrate more transparency if there is a feedback process early on. We can listen to that, and then that can be used to inform the budget process, much like occurred when we had a budget committee that was convened.
I'd like to call a halt to this discussion because we've got the amendment still. We need to vote on that first, which we haven't done.
Okay, so the amendment is based on the perception of how it fits in the budget process?
No, the amendment is based on the fact that on September the 7th, that, September the 7th, that regular board meeting will be at 6:00 PM.
I understand because part of the suggestion was to have an evening meeting. So I'm, it's, it's cool. I can, I got a vote and I can, this is cool.
But then we can discuss what you were just discussing, if you choose to do that.
I am able to be quiet.
All in favor of the mo-, are there any other comments? All in favor of the motion to have the September meeting be our regular meeting and at 6:00 PM? Raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All opposed? Two. So, did I say six or seven?
Six.
Six. Raise your hands again if you were in favor. I think it's seven. Two, four, six, seven. Seven in favor and two against and no extensions. So the mo-, motion to move the September meeting time, date remains the same till 6:00 PM. Now, is there any follow-up that you wish about the suggestion that we were discussing that Dr. Hoskins-Brown had brought up because of one of our speakers, basically? Any further thing you want to go with that?
Uh, I, I feel like we, it used to happen, people probably didn't show up to the budget meetings when there was a budget committee, but it. but it sounds as if this individual and maybe other individuals, because we've had more people come and talk about the CARES Act money and the multiple, you know, how that's been divvied up, that there might be more people that want to come and talk about budget. Are we, will we call a special meeting, able to tell people we are only going to discuss the budget? Or can they bring other things into that meeting as well? I just wanted to turn it into another board meeting where everybody brings other concerns, but I could definitely see a, a special call meeting discussing the budget while it's being developed by Ms. Page and all of her.
Dr. Hoskins Brown and then others who want to speak as well. We need to move on.
If it is the will of the majority to have us another special budget meeting, I will certainly serve and, and come and attend. However, um, the requests that we got for evening meetings have occurred over the last four or five months and have ranged the topics of masking to COVID mitigation to everything else. We have so many hearings, um, meetings in the evening that are specifically budget that people don't come to. I'm not enamored with the idea of creating another one committed only to budget. Um, but I also, in this discussion, have received the information that if, if I have a commitment to community feedback, there are mechanisms available to me that I can exercise that does not require the board convening an evening meeting. And, and, and I'm okay with that.
Ms. Gorbowski.
In our packet, the budget calendar states that March 7th will begin community stakeholder input presentations and surveys. Does that not coincide with an earlier opportunity for the community? And I don't know if that stakeholder is more narrow than the broader public, so perhaps there's an opportunity to extend beyond just stakeholders to a level of the larger community and public as a whole. But I think it's, in looking at that budget calendar, there may be an opportunity to just make some tweaks. And maybe it's a meeting, maybe it's a forum, but I think it would be helpful to hear from the staff thoughts on how we might be able to achieve earlier transparency, information, and opportunities to hear from the community as part of that budget process, if that's appropriate to do so.
Well, the only thing I, I want to say here is that I think in March, March, that would be too early, I feel, because I don't believe that we've had time to get our information about the military rate. We don't know what it's going to be. So the folk that are coming in, uh, we want to be able to give them very much information. So I, I, I think March would be a little too early, probably around the first of April if we could, but then I don't see a date in here possibly that we want to do that. But, um, my, I think March 7th would be too early.
Mr. Jackson.
Um, good afternoon. As Mr. Cashmore mentioned, pretty much anything we do before March, um, historically, we would just get budget input, feedback from the community. Um, prior to the pandemic, we would try to take advantage of your, uh, town hall meetings and do a quick presentation at some of your meetings to get budget input. So if, if things are in our favor, we will have the opportunity to do that again, um, to visit some of your town hall meetings and to give those in attendance an opportunity to, to get some budget input or some budget feedback or suggestions. Um, fort- um, fortunately, you have more people attend your town hall meetings than we would have come here to attend a budget workshop. So we try to take advantage of that and hopefully we can get back into the swing of that this year.
I would, uh, I would ask, um, if the board would allow the new officers and myself as we meet with the superintendent and her staff to keep, discuss this further with the understanding that indeed we will come back to you as a board and offer something. Uh, I have a, I have a very different impression than some of you because after many years, a good number of years on this board, the people who have come to the night meetings, I believe without exception, have always been concerned about military rate. They're not concerned about the budget. When someone's talking about how much budget is going to academic affairs and things like that, that's a whole different matter. And I think we need to discuss how best to bring that. I happen to remember that when I ran for office the last time, that all of the other candidates running for this seat that I'm in made great to do about how they couldn't understand the, the budget because it was so complicated. Well, it is complicated, and it's not like my checking account at home by any means. And, and if someone thinks a special meeting or forum is going to totally educate them, they are wrong. And secondly, it is almost impossible in a meeting like that to come to grips with what their own private concerns are. But let us come back to you with something. Is that, yes, Dr. Howard Hall?
If we have a six o'clock meeting to convene on September 7th for the regular meeting, would there be an informal meeting on that day?
Probably.
Would it be an hour prior to six, maybe five?
I think that's a good thing for the vice president to consider as the next. Be careful because you're now one of us. No, I, I think that, is that okay with you?
Yes, and from listening to the constituents, they're more concerned about evening regular meetings.
Right.
From, from what I gather, as opposed to the budget meetings.
I know, I know.
So do you think it's in any way possible to-
Well, that's why if we try the September one, at least that gives us something out of regular meeting to try. I, I mean, I bet y'all, y'all will. I, I've just sat through a lot of night meetings where staff had to be here till eight, nine, and we did, and we didn't have anybody here like we do in an afternoon meeting. And I'm, that sounds cynical and all that, and I don't mean for it to be. Let's move on, please. Um, we voted on- Oh, yeah. So all in favor of the resolution as amended with the September meeting being at 6:00 PM instead of two, all the rest remaining the same? Raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Motion passes nine, zero, zero. The last item, uh, the next item has to do with committee appointments of the board. I am the one who makes those committee assignments. I chose this year to keep the assignments the same as last year because it had been somewhat of a different kind of year in terms of meetings and whether we were able to get enough work done that we were aiming for. You see the resolution, I mean, you see the committees there? I need a resolution to accept those committees before I ask for the resolution. I will say though, that, uh, there will be a, um, ad hoc committee on charter school policies. And Mr. Cashmore, in his wisdom, has agreed to chair that committee. And so, um, we will be asking some of you others to serve on that committee with him. And I have a motion that we approve the committee for the year. Mr. Johnson moved. Dr. Hoskins Brown seconds. All in any comment? Any comments from board members? All in favor, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Motion passes nine, zero, zero. Is that all of the board matters?
Absolutely. Final item on the board matters for today is the addition to the agenda wherein the board does have an action item for the vote on the proposed district boundaries of Chatham County Board of Education. Based on census data, it is periodically the responsibility of the Board of Education to work with Chatham County Commission to revise districts of Chatham County based on changes in population. Through the Metropolitan Planning Commission, both the Savannah-Chatham County Board of Education and Chatham County Commission have received and reviewed information on proposed changes to district maps. The proposed Chatham County district boundaries have also been reviewed by the Legislative and Congressional Repportionment Office of the Georgia General Assembly, and technical certification has been granted. The map has been posted to board docs and has been previously provided to board members in conjunction with the gen- with this agenda action. It is now being presented for review and final approval for submission to the state legislature. Thus be it resolved that the proposed Chatham County district boundaries as identified by the map that was identified in the technical certification form be approved by the Board of Education.
You've heard the resolution. Uh, Dr. Breaman, is that a motion? Dr. Breaman moved. Mr. Johnson seconds. Um, Dr. Breaman, any-
I, I would just like to thank all parties involved in the process of, uh, working to put these maps together, um, with our counterparts on the county commission, um, but also with the Metropolitan Planning Committee, um, taking the time with the GIS systems to walk us through to try to, um, create, uh, districts that still represent what the prior districts, uh, were as well.
Mr. Johnson.
Uh, I just also want to remind the public that, um, everybody gave up something. We all had to compromise. Um, and I would like to say to, um, my partner in crime here in the sixth district, welcome to the west side.
Any other, Ms. Hines?
I'd like to say I'm glad that this process is over and these, uh, uh, these, this, this re-line is in place for the next 10 years. So keep that in mind.
Any other comments from board members? Ms. Hall?
I'd like to thank Ms. Gorbowski for helping us, um, smooth over, um, any problems that we might have run into at the end of this process. I was very proud of how we handled it. So I'm very happy that we're making this resolution today.
Any other comments?
Just like, just like to welcome Ms. Hall to more Portland, worth.
All in favor of this motion, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The motion passes nine, zero, zero. I would, uh, I would like for a minute to reflect our sincere thanks to the Metropolitan Planning Commission and, and Ms. Wilson, and all who had a part because it was very nicely done in, in a most professional way. And I really think we, if we can reflect that, I would appreciate it. I, in fact, once it's settled, I'd like to have our comments so we can tell a thank you personally. So any other to go?
And if we could just remind everyone that, um, this is just a part of the process. So we have done, uh, yeoman's work to this point. I appreciate your, uh, full support of this process. Dr. Buck and I had an opportunity to stand to the side and, uh, just watch everything, uh, work out. It does go to the state legislature before it is finally approved. And, um, we thank Senator Watson for giving us the timeline to work within. Um, it's my understanding from talking with, uh, the chairman today of County Commission that their plan is to have, uh, everything done in the next couple of weeks. So we should be able to, to forward, um, our consensus, uh, to the state legislature. And we'll look forward to getting that back so that we can proceed.
Just for your information, Chairman of County Commission was aware of the fact that we were about to vote on this today. So, uh, because they had not voted yet, we didn't want to surprise them. So. Uh, all in favor, have we already voted? How far so far? Have we voted? Can we go on? We need, uh, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please. Uh, Ms. Hines moved, Mr. Dr. Breaman seconds. All in favor of passing, um, I mean, of voting affirmatively on the consent agenda? Raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes eight, zero, one with one extension. Uh, I believe we only have, what, one item in, is that right? Yeah. The budget process update. Oh, there she is, the G-bummer.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Um, this evening, I'm going to go over, uh, a budget process update, and I'm going to focus on our projected enrollment for our school district for next school year. In our enrollment forecast, one of the important things we do is we look at the past and current patterns of change. We incorporate our predictions and how, what trends that are going to occur in the future that we predict. Um, to forecast our enrollment, we use census state and local data and population growth, student promotion, and birth rates. And I just want to kind of give you a brief discussion. The way we get started is the budget office at first puts together the data, and they put it, we put it into a, his, um, spreadsheet and analysis which focuses on historic data mainly. We do look at the birth rates from five years ago. After we come up with our figures, we then provide these figures to all of the school sites, their principals and staff so that they can provide input to us. So they see what numbers we came up with. And we have it by grade at each school site. Uh, the principals and school staff may know something we don't, such as there is a, um, large apartment complex being built in their community, and they alert us to that, that there may be quite a few more students that may be attending their school next year. And we, then it is sent back to the budget office. We compile all that information. And then once we've gotten those numbers together on what we believe to be the, um, the best ans- uh, the best numbers for that, we then call in, um, the other, period, um, the other heads of our departments and divisions of our school districts, the associate superintendents, and the HR personnel. And we sit down, we're, first we submit it out to them, and then they give us their feedback. And then we meet, which this year was remotely, but we met in a Microsoft Teams meeting. And we got together and they were able to give more input and tell us yes or no they agreed with it. So then we came back together, once everybody agreed on the numbers, and we then sent them out to the schools. So that is essentially our process with our enrollment, uh, when we do our enrollment forecast. As we all know, enrollment is very important. These forecasted, projected, and student enrollment, the, one of the reasons it's so important is it determines the staffing at the school sites. So if their enrollment goes down, they lose staffing. If their enrollment's going up, they're going to gain staffing. We, as a district, have been on a slow decline due to birth rates in Chatham County, and this is nationwide also. We have lost a total of 1,167 students since fiscal year 19 to this year, compared to this year. Um, the loss in enrollment is due, as I said, to the decline in the birth rates and possibly the pandemic. And one, another important thing besides the staffing that the enrollment drives is our enrollment is extremely important because that also determines our state funding. On this graph, it shows you, you can look at 2017 birth rates in Chatham County, and those would be our kindergarten students for next school year. And as you can see from the graph, our birth rate is declining in a downward trend. On this next slide, this shows, um, the five-year regular enrollment summary for grades one through five. This does not include the pre-K or self-contained students. And for next fiscal year, there is a projected loss of 189 students compared to what we have this year. That's what we've projected for the elementary grades one through five. In this slide, we project a loss of three students next school year compared to the 20th day count this year. So that one is remaining fairly steady in grades six through eight. That does not include any pre-K or self-contained students. That does not include any pre-K or self-contained students. On this graph, we project a gain of eighty-seven students in grades nine through twelve to go, to grow eighty-seven students compared from this year to next school year. And this graph shows the total school enrollment, and it does include the pre-K and the self-contained special ed students. And we project losing a total of 105 students next school year as compared to the twentieth day count this school year. This graph shows, um, the school, the school, this shows the enrollment for private, the private school enrollment, which from, compared to last year to this year, they grew 537 students. This graph shows a comparison of the trends for private and public school enrollment. Private school enrollment is less than one-fifth of the size of our public school enrollment. The trend in public school enrollment is a slow downward trend. Private school enrollment was in a downward trend through fiscal year twenty, and they've shown an upward trend since fiscal year twenty-one. This shows our future on what we predict. We project a slow decline in enrollment over the next three years due to the decline in birth rates in Chatham County. This is a slide of the, um, budget calendar that was just previously being discussed. And this is another slide of the budget calendar. One of the things that's one of, that I'd like to take note is we have put down June 22nd as the final board adoption for our budget. And this concludes the presentation. If anybody has any questions?
Any questions from board members? Ms. Hall? Mrs. Johnson? Dr. Howell?
Hi, Paige.
Hi.
What is the correlation between a lower enrollment and state funding? What would you say?
Well, of course, when we go down in enrollment, our state funding goes down because it is based on the FTE per student, which is based on the student being enrolled in school all day. They are, they are divided into six segments, so if we lose students, we obviously lose enrollment. Sometimes we can gain it based on, some students gain more FTE than others, such as special ed gifted. You get a little bit more because you have to have a smaller classroom. But all in all, um, enrollment, the loss of enrollment means less state funding to us. You know, they can increase the funding per child, but as far as overall, every time we lose a child, that is a loss to the district of state funding.
Do we notice it much up until a certain level? Does it have to reach a certain level before we really feel the pinch of it, or, um?
Well, the way ours has been going down at a very slow rate, we've kind of been able to absorb it slowly through attrition and, you know, just, we're always in need of teachers and, um, s- school staff. It seems like, you know, the way, the turnover for the summer, you always have needs. So we haven't had to utilize any sort of laying off of any staff in years and years. So, um, in that regard, we're fairly lucky because we're not doing like big drops of enrollment. It's slow, so we've been able to kind of absorb it slowly, and it doesn't hurt us as much. As well as the fact that locally, our, um, the local tax dollars we receive, we've been very fortunate because our community and where we live, um, is very prosperous. So it has helped, the local is the majority of our money we receive now. I know when I first started this job twenty-seven years ago, um, it was with the opposite. We got more state money than local, but now we have more local, we use the local more. And that's one reason that during the pandemic, we were not as hurt as some communities that are more reliant on the state when they did the austerity, the huge austerity reduction.
I've just been thinking about the fact that since this is not a trend, it's just here in Chatham County. This is statewide, if nationwide, the how that will affect the state if all the districts in the state are seeing this kind of movement, how that might affect, um, their decisions on funding. Uh, I'd be interested, you know, in seeing will that make them decide to be more generous? You know, because it's happening well? Probably not. But I think it would be interesting for us to keep an eye on that.
I know that, um, some of the state, we're in the top ten. We're like the tenth largest school district in the state. And most of the ones that are larger than us, they are in that growing state because they're like in the Atlanta area, Fulton County, you know, those are growing still. Forsyth County. So there are some areas growing, um, so they seem to be able to, you know, it's not affecting them as much as others. And of course, obviously rural areas are much more affected than we are. So we're kind of a little ways in the middle there, but thank goodness for our local tax dollars.
Any, Ms. Gravalski?
Well, and you actually just touched on a point that I was going to ask about. I understand that, you know, state and national trends of declining birth rates, but we're also one of the fastest-growing counties in Georgia. And so I wonder how that is playing into your projections for enrollment? Just the growth rate of Chatham County specifically?
Well, most of what we've looked at is the birth rate of the children. And even though we're growing, I believe that we're growing mostly with, as a retirement-type community. It seems like we're getting people to move down here after they had children and maybe retired. People are moving from up north, down south in a lot of cases. And as you can see, a lot of the, even the communities, the landings and stuff, is a lot of people that are retired move down here from up north. So I think that may be why the birth, even though we may be growing in size, the birth rate, we keep going down. As you can see, the trend is decreasing every year. And it doesn't look like it's, there was one year where it picked up a little bit, but it is a.
Well, I guess I just want us to be cognizant of, of not putting all our eggs in one basket and only looking at the birth rate, because we have families that are moving here from. Yes, there are a lot of retirees, but there are also a lot of families who are moving here from other parts of the country as well, who come with children that are already school age. And so I just think it's something for us to be very cognizant of and, and perhaps take a look, um, see if there's a way to, to get a little bit more information, um, about how, how that might play into our projections.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Uh, I have Ms. Hines, Dr. Breenman, oh, Mr. Johnson first. Ms. Hines? Oh, okay. Mr. Johnson, Dr. Breenman, Howard Howell.
Um, well, first off, uh, Ms. Gravalski took one of my points with, um, the whole growth and stuff, especially out on the west side with all the building and everything else. Uh, and I do know that y'all work with, um, the deputy superintendent, uh, Mr. Michael Kayler, with, uh, with what's going on with NPC and growth and how many moves are going to be, um, put out there. So I, I do know you do that, and I just wanted to, um, this, with everything that's going on, I want to thank you and Mr. Jackson with all the hard work I do with the budget, because I know it's a moving target, um, working with the budgets process that I've been on this board. Uh, I know how hard that is, how much time and effort it is. I just want to thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Breenman, Dr. Howell, then we need to move on.
Would you be able to just give a ballpark figure per student FTE state funding? What that, and if not, that, that's a crazy number for me to ask for right now. I, I can't think it's more than ten or fifteen thousand dollars a student. Do you ask?
It just, it's so variable because it's like kindergarten, it's different, you know, it's all gifted. How many sections of gifted do they have? Um, remedial ed, it's, I can.
But a thousand student drop, it seems like you're confident that with our budget process and with the money we bring in locally, we're easily able to deal with that. It's not a problem.
Yes, and that was like not just from last year, a thousand, you know, it was over several, a few years back. But, um, yes, because we've just been very slowly decreasing, we've been able to absorb it. And of course, obviously, if we have less students, we have less teachers because we don't have, we base them on a class size. So that's another thing, because we always are in need of teachers. I'm never worried about that. Uh, we always need teachers.
I have, uh, Dr. Howard Howell.
Yes, there's an overall population, you know, overall decline, but if you look at a targeted population out at West Port Wentworth in the Rice Creek area, there are so many apartments that are, um, being erected as long as, as well as housing for younger families. So with, with that being said, has there been much communication with the, um, the officials at Port Wentworth to discuss the growth out there?
What we found is that that area is growing tremendously and going up, but what's happening is people are moving from other parts of Savannah to the west side, to those cooler areas. It's not like we're gaining people from outside of our county. It's just a distribution of, instead of being maybe in midtown or something, it's, they have moved, people have moved from one area of Savannah to another, and that area now is the west side, the cooler areas, the big growth area now. We're not finding that we're bringing that many people in from outside of our county. It's just that we are redistributing them. So it's like when we know that this one is going down, even though, like in Poole, I keep adding more and more in those areas, but it, I have to take it out of somewhere else because that's what we're finding, is they just move from one to, you know, from one area to the other area of Savannah.
Any other comments?
Make the opening salvo to be thinking about this discussion when you start thinking about the millage rate. Please remember this discussion. The millage rate.
Thank you.
Does that mean we lower the millage rate?
It means we're going to get less money from the state, so we need to leave it alone.
Any other comments on this? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We've still got a, a long ways to go as we begin this process, but, um, we got lots of people moving in, but, um, a good number of them are moving in the counties adjacent to us. And, and I would disagree with what Ms. Gravalski said, because the numbers are not showing all the families you've said. I mean, we're sure. Briefly?
Yes, sir, very brief. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, bringing to you financial statements for the period ending the month of November, 2021. For all funds, we've expended, um, forty-one point six percent of the fiscal year. Uh, revenues are coming along pretty good, as expected. Um, we're at fifty-seven point seven, um, fifty-six point two percent, which is lower than last year. We're higher than FY 2020. Uh, t- total general fund revenues are fifty percent of the current modified budget, which is higher than last year, a forty-six percent at this time. General fund expenditures are pretty much on target, similar to what, what it was last year. Um, a little bit slower pace than pre-pandemic expenses, but we're, we're still coming on pretty good. At this time, we have no other, um, outstanding concerns with any other funds. We still have some federal, um, funds that the, the state is still working on updating and finalizing. Like, as I mentioned last month, they have some funds that, um, some grants that they extended the grant period, so they're giving us some more time to spend some of those. So countering some of the budgets, um, out of whack, but we should be clearing some of those up pretty soon. Any questions?
Questions, uh, Mr. Jackson? Any questions, Mr. Jackson? Hearing none. May you present this other resolution, Mr. Jackson?
I have one agenda item. Is it an agenda item or? Yes. Uh, budget ratification, as you all remember earlier, last year, I'm sorry. Uh, around March, we received some money from the governor for, um, some teacher bonuses. So this ratification is for the money we received from the state last year. They changed the way they wanted us to record it, so we have to record it on our books as if it was a CARES grant to the district. So the five point four million dollars we received from the state, which is actually money that we paid the teachers last, um, March, if I'm not mistaken. So thus be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approve the CARES Act S R two L E A bonus budget ratification in the amount of five million, four hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
You've heard, Mr. Ketchmar moves, um, approval of the motion. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Hines? Uh, Mr. Ketchmar anything? Ms. Hines anything? Other board members? Do we, once we approve this, does it go out in a prominent spot on our webpage?
The.
Well, I, you know, we've had a lot of interest in it.
Right.
Somehow, sometimes it, the board meeting kind of gets lost and, and.
Yeah, as far as the CARES Act funding, one of the things we're working on, we started in, in December. One of the things we're working on is a dedicated CARES Act website. To put some, some graphs, some, some information on all three of the CARES Act. So we're going to have information on two of them up soon. Then we'll get the third one up soon as we get that one adopted from the state.
I know, I know I asked you this. Thank you very much. Do we have a timeframe on the, um, ARP funds grant?
Not as of right now. We're to the point where we're finally, um, ready to send it to the state for their approval and acceptance, so I would say within the next couple of months. They've been kind of behind at this stage. Um, they started a process with the CARES Act Office of one person. Um, I know they hired a few people right before Christmas, so they're playing catch-up.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Voting on the, uh, the resolution. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Uh, motion passes seven, zero, zero. Uh, uh, seven, zero, yeah, zero. Let the record show that Ms. Hall and Dr. Haskins Brown have left the room, so. Any other business to come before this group? Motion to adjourn from Dr. Breenman's second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor, raise your hands. Thank you. Happy New Year.